City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Alderman Revelle, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fleming, Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wynn, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ruth Simmons, Alderman Sufferton. We have a quorum.
Terrific, great. Thank you, and welcome, everybody, to the snowy evening on Monday, January 28, 2019, for the Evanston City Council meeting. First off, if you -- I just want to make sure everybody understands, one issue that's certainly a big one around town that folks have opinions about is the library parking lot. That item has been left in committee, meaning that the council is not going to discuss that this evening here. That will remain in committee, and they'll discuss it further at the next meeting there. So if you are here for public comment on that, you're welcome to stay and talk about it if you want, or you can come back at the next meeting when it's going to be discussed up here by the council. A couple announcements today. First off, you know, I want to thank our Public Works Department for the hard work that everyone is doing and the long hours that they're working to try and keep our streets clear of all this snow that we're getting. I also want to caution everybody on the harsh weather that is coming our way. I mean, we are talking historical lows in this area, where tomorrow they're projecting the temperature to be from 4 degrees to minus 18 degrees. That is not including the wind chill. On Wednesday, the projection is minus 12 degrees to minus 21 degrees. Again, not including the wind chill. And on Thursday, 0 to 2 degrees. So we are talking extremely frigid weather. Please stay inside. Please take care of yourselves. Please check, you know, with a phone call to your neighbors. The city manager will talk about some specific things that we are doing as a city to try and make sure that folks are safe and warm through these really cold days ahead of us. So thank you to everyone that's out there working hard to try to keep our streets clear, and I do appreciate everyone's patience. I know it is not perfect out there. I've heard from some people saying, "Hey, our street's not plowed." We are doing the best that we can and, again, are trying to change the way that we're doing things because of the cold weather that's coming up. So that's one. Second, you know, we talk about what a great urban ring city Evanston is and the cultural opportunities here. I just want to note one that really is pretty historic. The Block Museum here in Evanston just opened an exhibit, and it's a really, really big deal. And the exhibit's called Caravans of Gold: Fragments in Time, and it is the first major exhibit in the world addressing the scope of the Saharan trade and the shared history of West Africa, the Middle East, North Africa, and Europe from the 8th century to the 16th century. And it is here at our own Block Museum until -- boy, I thought I wrote it. It is July, thank you. Until July. So really, if you can afford yourself the opportunity to go over and spend an hour or two there, you won't be disappointed. There literally are people from all over the world coming here for this exhibit. It's going to leave here, go to Canada, and then it's going to go to the African American Art Museum, our Smithsonian Museum in Washington, DC. So the event that I was at earlier last week, not only was the director of the Smithsonian African Art Museum there, but the former director was also there, as well as several, you know, art historians and archaeologists from Africa and other -- in the Middle East and other parts of the world. So something to really be proud of, that that exhibit is here. And lastly, we are moving into February, and February is Black History Month. And I've issued a proclamation, and I want to read it because, again, I just think it's important for us all to take note of the importance of black history in America. And we will have many, many events celebrating that month. But the proclamation reads, "Whereas in 1926, Dr. Carter Woodson, who worked in the Kentucky coal mines as a child and was the son of former slaves, proposed and launched a week-long celebration of the individuals and occasions having a significant impact on African-American history in America. And whereas Dr. Woodson chose the month of February to conduct his commemoration because the birthdays of two men whose actions have significantly affected African-Americans in this country are in February, namely Frederick Douglass, the gifted orator, writer, and statesman, who was a tireless advocate of the antislavery movement, and Abraham Lincoln, a native son of Kentucky who signed the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas African-American History Month was originally founded to be the second week of February, and at its inception was named Negro History Week and was expanded to a month with the name changed to African-American History Month during a convention of the Association for the Study of Negro Life and Culture in the 1970s, with the Association also changing its name at that time to the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas during the month of February 2019 across the United States of America, observances will be held to increase public awareness on the importance of black history and the contributions that African-Americans have made toward their country. And whereas the citizens of Evanston should recommit themselves to an ideal America where equality and justice will always prevail and to the principles of love, wisdom, understanding, and compassion toward one another. And whereas the respect that fellow citizens have for one another determines the value of any country, now therefore I, Stephen Howard Hagerty, the mayor of the city of Evanston, do hereby proclaim February 2019 as Black History Month in the city of Evanston. And I do hereby urge citizens of this great city to be mindful of the contributions of African-Americans and of all citizens throughout the year." So, again, we'll be announcing, I'm sure, at meetings in February some of the events that will be commemorating Black History Month. And with that, city manager, do you have any announcements?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. First, I wanted to give you an update on something we briefed you on our last meeting, and that was assistance to federal government employees living in Evanston. As I think you're all aware, the shutdown has concluded, at least for two weeks. So federal employees are once again being paid. We did not receive a lot of interest in our offer. We received four phone calls, but no applications were completed for financial assistance. So I just wanted to let you know that that is in place, and should this happen after the two-week stopgap funding, that we would go ahead and return that. So I did this first to segue into the siren that you're hearing. It is age 15, so you know that if it's age 15, that means we have a snow route parking ban this evening. So we are in the midst of our snow cleanup from the snows we received yesterday into early this morning. We got a little under six inches here in Evanston. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the kudos to our Public Works Agency, Dave Stonebeck, Edgar Cano. Really an outstanding job of cleaning up. Because of the temperatures that we're expecting on Wednesday and Thursday, we shortened the snow cleanup from what is normally a three-day cleanup to a two-day cleanup, so we had the first day of the snow emergency today. Snow route parking ban this evening. We'll have the second day of the snow emergency, and we feel pretty confident at that point that the streets will be clean. I also want to thank Director Thomas Smith, who's here. She's led an effort today for shoveling. So we have deployed members of her staff, police, fire, volunteers, to go out and remind people of their obligations for shoveling. We have door hangers, which we distributed. Director Thomas Smith, any idea about how many door hangers we distributed today?
250.
250. So we will be out again tomorrow to encourage folks, certainly to do the shoveling, but also, more importantly, to do it tomorrow, so that it is taken care of for when the weather changes. So we are expecting record-low temperatures starting late tomorrow all through Wednesday into Thursday. Northwestern University has already made their declaration that they will be closed from midday -- from 8:00 PM tomorrow to midday on Thursday. So they will have classes canceled. I've been in touch with both the superintendents of District 65 and District 202. They both plan to make announcements of their class schedules for Wednesday by noon tomorrow. The YMCA has already announced that it's going to be closed, at least their main facilities, on Wednesday. They have not announced. The childcare center will follow, whatever District 65 decides. So what are we going to do? We will certainly have police and fire personnel on as regular. Our Public Works staff will be on high alert. While the folks working the plows, I think, will have a well-deserved rest. Our water and sewer team will be on standby because certainly we're expecting some difficulties with the water lines, given the severe cold. We've not determined what the status of this building will be at this point. We'll make that decision tomorrow. I want a balance, being able to provide service. I don't imagine we'll have a lot of need for the city's administrative services on Wednesday, and I also want to be mindful of staff. All this has really been done the last several days so that we can make sure that our residents are safe. Moving up the snow emergency, making sure people didn't have to move cars on Wednesday, was all done for our residents, for our employees, and so we'll continue those efforts. I'm happy to answer any other questions. The lights are not working this evening.
I am. So two questions. First of all -- oh, now it's working.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I guess statement -- question then statement. Question is, will we have our warming facilities open on Wednesday? And if so, where and what are the hours of operation?
We are still finalizing the specifics of that. The other thing we are concerned about and have been in touch with, especially District 65, is what recreation facilities will be open throughout the day. We're finalizing that, and once District 65 makes their intentions known, we are prepared right after that to let the community know what facilities will be open. We have some facilities that have registered classes, which we're already getting cancellations for, so I think there's an opportunity to shift some staff around. I think we're looking at three or four facilities would remain open, and then the balance of the Parks and Rec facilities would be closed. We would shift staff around to congregate them. So the larger facilities -- I only hesitate because if plans change with the school districts, I don't want to create a false expectation. But we're prepared to get that information out to the community, probably certainly after the schools make their determinations.
Just a moment of reflection. I mean, speaking to residents going into Monday and Wednesday, my wife's a teacher, a lot of folks are planning to take that day off. And I have businesses outside of Evanston that are closing, particularly for that day of this week, just in anticipation of the cold weather. So I can't think of any reason that our building should be open, just given the fact that Northwestern, all the other districts are going to be closed. So my suggestion slash -- yeah, just my suggestion would be if we could close the building Wednesday, at least on Wednesday for that cold day, we may be able to -- I think that would be a good idea. Just a thought.
And certainly, that's the path we're going down. Again, we have many employees who serve many different roles, and I just want to make sure that those that have services that would be needed by the community on Wednesday are available. And so there's multiple ways to do that, but we're going to make sure we have that balance between making sure the community is served, as well as being respectful to our employees.
Thank you, Alderman Sufferton and Alderman Rainey.
I think those are lights.
Oh, you guys don't have anything? Okay, Alderman Fisk?
Thanks. And, Mr. City Manager, if it's possible, I would like the security personnel in the parking garages just to check around and make sure that people who are trying to sleep in the parking garages are warm.
Say that last part again.
I want to make sure that people who might be sleeping in the parking garages are warm. I know that's a big concern.
Yep. Alderman Fleming?
And as we think about the warming centers also, obviously, again, South Evanston doesn't have a city facility outside of the Levy Center, which I don't know if we're going to open up for non-seniors. But I did hear on, I think, BEZ that CTA was making some buses available for warming stations, that they were parking throughout the city. I don't know if that would be something that we want to welcome here in our city somewhere. You know, I'm always concerned, as we all are, about particularly children who are home. Every parent is not going to have the day off on Wednesday, and, you know, they might not be able to get from Howard or Oakton to somewhere else.
Also, I see the fire chief in the back. I don't know if it's online on the website. I know the fire department today put out basically a public service announcement. If you want to come up, chief, you can put out a public service announcement for what you can proactively do with your apartment or your home, you know, to make sure that, you know, again, your systems can try to withstand, you know, such cold temperatures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, city manager Bob Quitz, fire chief Brian Scott. So today in social media, we did put out some recommendations for residents to take some proactive measures to kind of help prepare and combat some of the negative effects of the Arctic cold that's going to be coming on Wednesday. And some of those things include maybe lowering the temperature of your furnace just to help it kind of maintain its ability to heat the home, because it's going to be tested to the maximum on Wednesday. Also, take some proper precautions with respect to some of the pipes in your home, so if any pipes in your home or on the exterior wall that you suspect may freeze, to keep those kind of running at a trickle to prevent it freezing for the cold weather. And of course, to check on our neighbors. Be very proactive and be a good neighbor in the community, and make sure that if anyone is elderly or there's any concerns with the people around us, that we check them on a regular basis. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
And let me just conclude by saying 3-1-1, that if anyone has a question, if you're concerned about a neighbor, if you're concerned about yourself, that you need anything from us, 3-1-1 is the way to reach us. If you go to our website, there's other ways other than calling 3-1-1. You can reach the operators. We are opening at 6:00 AM until further notice each morning, but please call 3-1-1. They will be fully staffed, and they will be able to answer questions and direct you to resources that you need. One of the challenges, we're really not sure what we're going to face. We can be prepared and have staff ready, but, you know, nearly every system that we depend on in society, electricity, cell phones, cable TV, everything has electromechanical devices that are not necessarily designed to withstand this cold, so any of those could fail, and we'll then have to grapple with the response, working with Partner Utilities. So we're just trying to have enough people around to be able to respond. So if you need something, please call 3-1-1.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn.
Yes, I would just -- I'm actually trying to find where the location is, but there are five churches that are part of Interfaith Action, including my church, St. Paul's Lutheran, that are providing overnight shelter sites this winter, and I'm looking for the schedule to see, you know, I believe it's First Presbyterian tonight.
Is it First Presbyterian?
It's at 1429 Chicago Avenue. Chicago Avenue, right. So there is -- But they don't open until 9:00, and they close at 6:00 AM.
And you got to be in by 10:00.
You have to. So you can get in from 9:00 to 10:00. I was there for the last couple nights. You get in from 9:00 to 10:00, and you leave at 6:00 AM. And I'm always concerned where those folks are going at 6:00 AM. Robert Crown is listed as being open at 5:30, but as you know, if you don't have a car, Robert Crown is not necessarily closed. But they are offering shelter.
Is it First Presbyterian all -- because normally, they switch every two weeks. Is it this whole week?
For two weeks, I think they just moved there because they were at UCE the other day, but I will double -- I will confirm that before.
Okay, so for this next two weeks, it's going to be at St. -- at First Presbyterian.
I'm going to triple-check, but I'm pretty sure.
Great. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. City Clerk, do you have any announcements?
Yes. Yes, I do have a few announcements. I want to briefly recap an event that the city clerk's office held a few weeks ago after our last city council meeting, where we invited former Governor Pat Quinn in to discuss a voter initiative. The title of the event was, I think, "Your Seat on the Counselor," or something along those lines. And it was for a voter initiative, and I will very quickly read the text. It was -- it is that Governor Quinn discussed with residents, and from my understanding, residents are already circulating a petition to get this referendum on the ballot for the March 20 primary, to create it as a binding law here in the city. So if this referendum is passed, it will be binding. And the referendum is, "Shall the people of the city of Evanston provide for a voter petition and referendum process for the consideration and passage of city ordinances as follows? The city clerk and the mayor and the city council have the duty to assist the people of Evanston in exercising their right to petition and make known their opinions regarding the consideration of passage of municipal ordinances in the city of Evanston. At the request of any 25 electors, the city clerk shall promptly cause a proposal, a proposed ordinance to be drafted into ordinance form, including an official summary of the proposed ordinance. The official summary of the proposed ordinance may be introduced by a petition filed with the city clerk and signed by a number of electors equal to at least 8% of the total votes cast in Evanston for the candidates for governor in the preceding gubernatorial election. The procedure for filing the petition and determining its validity and sufficiency shall be established by the city clerk, who shall make the determination of validity and sufficiency within 21 days of petition filing. Upon the determination of a valid and sufficient petition, the clerk shall, within one day, submit the ordinance proposed by official petition summary on the addition -- on the agenda of the next city council meeting for consideration by the mayor and members of the city council. The city council should take a roll call vote on the proposed ordinance within 70 days of submission by the clerk. And if the city does not pass the proposed ordinance within 70 -- within the 70-day period, the official summary of the proposed ordinance shall be submitted by the clerk's office to the electors for their approval by referendum at the next regularly scheduled election held in all precincts of the city, at least 70 days after the referendum submission by the city clerk. And the official summary is -- the official summary is provided by a majority of those voting on the question. The proposed ordinance shall have the full force and effect of passage by the corporate authorities. So essentially, residents will have the ability to come into the clerk's office, request an ordinance to be drafted. The clerk's office will cause that ordinance to be drafted. The council will then be required to vote on that ordinance. If the council chooses to not vote on the ordinance or votes down the ordinance, it'll go to referendum. And the council will have the ability, 30 days after the ordinance passes, to review that ordinance and disapprove of it by resolution. But this is an initiative that would give citizens the power to, you know, more fully make government reflect their values and have a seat here at the table. And so we're excited that Governor Quinn gave out -- gave his time to come discuss that initiative that exists in only -- in some form in only one city here in Illinois. We look forward to Evanston leading this -- leading on this initiative and bringing more direct democracy to our city.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Mr. Clerk, just to make sure everybody understands this. So the petition that would be circulated is a petition to basically allow citizens to craft ordinances to bring before the city council. Is that correct? And that they need a referendum, and they need to go out and get signatures of, you said, 8% of the people that voted. So how many people is that? And then I have a follow-up question.
Okay, so in our last gubernatorial election, we had record voter turnout, and so that number is quite high now. It is 2,700 signatures roughly is required to get any petition on the ballot.
All right, so 2,700 people would have to sign the petition, and then it would go on to -- automatically go on to the March ballot or --
Yes.
This 2019 ballot. Okay, and then let's say it passes, okay? And people say, "Yep, we want this right." Then people come to the clerk's office with ordinances that they want to present?
What they'd come with is essentially a petition signed by 25 registered voters in the city, and they'd request, let's say, you know, a $15-an-hour minimum wage, or whatever the case may be. The clerk's office would cause that ordinance to be drafted, and then the clerk's office would provide a summary of what the ordinance is.
All right, with 25 signatures, then it comes to the city council. City council has 70 days.
No, with 25 signatures, the clerk's office will then be mandated to cause it to be drafted into ordinance form and a summary created. And once that summary is created, they have to go back out and then collect
2,800 signatures.
2,800 signatures.
Again, before it comes here, okay?
Before it comes to the council.
Okay. So it's not the first part, "Hey, you got to get 2,800, pass the referendum to even have, you know, citizen ordinances." It's each time they want to.
They have to get 2,800 signatures.
All right. Alderman Fisk?
Mr. City Clerk, can you define what you mean by "cause it to be -- cause it to be written?" Cause it to be?
So that would --
Who's going to write the ordinance, I guess? Is it your office or the law department, or who would?
It would likely be the law department unless there are resources that were given to the clerk's office to hire in-house attorneys.
And who would be collecting the signatures on the petition?
Residents. It would be a citizen.
Is this something that you and the clerk's office are endorsing or organizing or helping to facilitate?
We are not organizing the petition drive. We had the former governor speak about an initiative that he's pushing in other places that involves the clerk's office, so.
Okay. I mean, I think in a way this dramatically changes our government, our form of government. And so I have questions, but I am not in a position even to ask them right now, but it's something I certainly want to think about.
Right. Well, I appreciate you announcing it and sort of explaining to folks, and then the council can decide at a certain point if they want to have a discussion about it. Okay. Is anything else? Clerk Reed?
Yes, I do, if I may, you know, take a privilege to make a brief comment. Tonight, the city council is set to approve a $1.25 million settlement.
Clerk Reed, I can't allow that, okay? The policy-setting body is the city council up here, and they're the ones that will make statements about any of the items on the agenda. We're going to go now into public comment. So we've got 15, or a little less than 15, people signed up for public comment. Everybody knows we set aside 45 minutes for public comment, up to three minutes a person, so given what we have today, everybody can have up to three minutes. Clerk Reed will keep the time. If you're getting up there, I'll give you a little nudge. If you wrap it up in 10 seconds, we'd appreciate it. And as always, we appreciate everybody's opinion on a variety of issues. So I'll list off the top three names each time, and if you guys can get ready to come up, we've got Dulce Lopez, Mike Vasilko, and then Doreen Price. Do we have?
Mr. Gibbs wants to be added.
Okay, we'll add him.
And I would also like to be added.
Okay, we'll add you at the end, okay? For citizen, for citizen comment, okay?
I lost him.
Okay, Mike, come on up. We'll take you, Mike, first. Welcome.
Thank you. Mike Vasilko, 2728 370 Evanston. It is premature to discuss item A14. I'm asking the council to please hold, hold item A14 until further -- some further date. Just by coincidence, I read today's -- tonight's agenda this morning. I was kind of shocked and disappointed to realize something of a sleight-of-hand, namely putting item A14 and inserting it into the agenda for action without fanfare. Approving item A14 would be something of an intentional assault on the public trust. Staff did a nice thing. They scheduled a community meeting on February 13. So those of us concerned about the cost of Robert Crown and those of us who want to discuss options to reduce the cost have an opportunity to do so. Staff did a nice thing, and yet, in apparently premeditated fashion, staff planned to push through item A14 to get council members to affirm the $16 million bond sale coming up later this year. Placing this on the agenda for action was deceitful because it undermines the entire purpose of the February 13 discussion. Let the February 13 discussion take place. Let the Friends of Robert Crown present their donor list on February 25. Let the council discuss the community concerns and the Friends of Robert Crown donation list on February 25. For now, though, please hold agenda item A14 until a later date. Questions remain unanswered. I've asked a number of times, who is going to be held financially accountable for the $9.5 million citizen of Evanston taxpayer money that was kind of wasted by preferentially selecting Bullin Andrews as the construction manager and general contractor for Robert Crown? That question has not been answered. I've asked it half dozen times in different ways and different forms. Other questions need to be answered before any additional public money is spent on Robert Crown's center. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Doreen Price is next, and then after Doreen, we have John O'Malley, then Ray Freeman.
Honestly, we didn't coordinate this. This is Doreen Price, 7th ward, and I have similar questions about A21. And A21 has to do with 2222 Oakton Street and with regard to the city manager being authorized at the last meeting, city council meeting, to explore sale options. authorized at the last meeting, city council meeting, to explore sale options or the money or the financing part of the deal. First of all, in terms of A21 being anywhere on the agenda, it's not on the agenda. You have to go read down further. And so I'm on page 17, not on the agenda page where I find this.
Doreen, what was, what was the issue on A21? Just so everybody knows.
A21, A21's not posted with clarity that it's being discussed. And then with regard to people knowing about it, I don't know who knows about it in terms of the community, and I would ask that to be hold as well, held as well.
Do you know what the topic is of A21?
Yes, I can read it. Ordinance 1220, I mean, O18, authorization to negotiate a redevelopment agreement and the state, and the sale of property at 2222 Oakton to Clark Street Real Estate LLC. City council adopted ordinance.
Got it. So just, so you're aware, Doreen, so that's not on tonight's agenda. That was on the agenda two weeks ago in the council met, right?
Right. But we haven't heard any updates about the negotiations or...
Okay. Gotcha, gotcha.
And if there are to be any discussions on that, I would also ask that that be held to the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And just, just so folks know on that, on that item that Ms. Price referred to, so the council left it with the city manager to have the negotiations, and those are ongoing. Okay. Next up, we've got, sorry here, John O'Malley. It's John O'Malley here, Ray Friedman, Ben Shapiro, and then we've got Terry and Joe Klucki. And again, if I've just slaughtered anyone's name, when you come up here, please pronounce your name correctly.
Ben Shapiro, 1127 Dewey Avenue, also current president of the library board of trustees. Mayor, you did a beautiful job pronouncing my name, even with the additional C in it. I'm here to speak about P4 ordinance 4019. Given that the Public Works and Administration Committee has held that over, that, that building's process over for until its next meeting, and that we, and I am not speaking for the board tonight on this issue, but having had numbers of conversations with Director Dan Zickelions and with John Devaney, our facilities manager, we have grave concerns about that type of building going on that lot, as it will negatively impact our ability to serve the public of Evanston, which is our mission. So I would hope that, at the very least, you will hold decision on this particular item and recognize that the library is negatively impacted by moving this from an R6 to a D3. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Ray Friedman, come on up, Ray.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, city council, city clerk, city manager. I would like to first comment on last Tuesday's Rules Committee meeting where you voted not to allow time to be ceded for public comment. I thought this issue was resolved several months ago, where you agreed to allow time to be ceded, but maximum time allowed to speak would be three minutes. So if 10 people wanted to cede their time, the maximum that any one person could speak would be three minutes. It seems this would save time having one person speak for 10, or if we only had 30 seconds and three people wanted to cede their time, the maximum would be two minutes. And why don't we allow people extra time if less people are signed up to speak? Seems we are creating a problem where one did not exist. Also, it seems that Mayor Hagerty has done an excellent job in managing the 45 minutes for public comment at city council meetings, regardless of the number of speakers. The other issue I'd like to address is how we might have our questions and concerns addressed. Thank you to Devon Reed for suggesting that maybe the clerk's office can help out with this issue. Hopefully, the city council can make that happen. It seems we have lost the sight of the big picture. It's about the residents first and foremost. Don't we have a voice in where and how our money is spent? I'd like to know how my property taxes will be affected this year and next. Are there any other lawsuits pending here in Evanston? Are we going to pursue the lawsuit with Jamison Park? Does Fountain Square need more repairs and at what cost? Why are we giving $1.5 million to a theater on Howard Street? Is this a loan or a gift? And why are we giving $2 million for a private development, 26 apartments and retail stores on Chicago and Howard? And again, is that a loan or a gift? Where is our new affordable housing located and how many affordable units have been created in the last three years? But more important, did the community come together to have their voices heard on any of these issues? Are we spending our money wisely or are we just creating new problems? Are we resolving our issues or just creating more committees and subcommittees to talk about them? Please address the issues, comments, and concerns from all residents so that we can move on. And remember, we are all one community, as stated in every ward email. We need to start acting like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Next up, we got Terry and Joe Klucki. And if I mispronounce that, please come on up here and pronounce your name. And then I've got Harris Miller, Kat Curry. Oh, Kat Curry's, I understand, not here. Okay. So we got Harris Miller and then Alex Zoo. Welcome.
Actually, we had signed up and, to speak in favor of item P7, and were informed there was nobody in opposition, so we just would ask to withdraw.
Okay.
No need to beat that into...
Okay. Why don't you just tell us what P7 is and what you, you're in support of it and just quickly, there's so people up here now.
Sure. So it's, it's a variance. We're part, my wife and I are part building owners at 705 Main, and it's the vacancy that's, it's, it's an overlay for retail, but we're speaking in favor of Dr. Curry.
Okay.
He's here with his wife that they want to come into the space. He's a longtime Evanston resident, tired of going into the city and bringing his patients and his revenue there and wants to be right down the street. So we're excited to have him in. We've tried to get retail people in there, but to no avail, and he's a really good fit for the, for the neighborhood and for the building.
Perfect. Thank you for coming out and supporting it. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We have Harris. Come on up, Harris Miller. And then Alex Zoo, then Misty Wittenberg.
All right. Good evening, all. I'm Harris Miller. I live at 905 Sherman Avenue. And first of all, I do want to say I support the two medical practices that will be at Main and Chicago. I do want to say that I have to go to Evanston Hospital or Skokie if I need immediate, immediate care or to see one of my doctors. So overall, I, I'm fully supportive of that. Also, I, about the, about the development 1714 at 20, I know that was tabled to February, so I'll keep it brief. I do deny that because I'm a preservationist and I, I'm just concerned about the, the spot zoning because this building will be a lot taller than the other buildings on that block. So it's just something that, that I question, how a developer could come in and not really think about the other buildings on that block. They're, they're about two and a half to three stories. The third thing that I have is, in front of my building where Squeeze Box is located, people who have disabilities, I know, have a lot of trouble getting out of their cars because there's this huge mound of snow in front of that building where Squeeze Box again is. So I'm asking that either the city or perhaps the property owner take care of that. No one could get out on the right-hand side. So thank you so much.
Okay. Thank, thank, thank you, Harris. Just on that, on that note, city manager, could you just talk to Main Dumpster Mile, perhaps, on, on that, pointing around Squeeze Box? Okay. Alex, do we have Alex Zoo?
I think he's left.
Okay, I think maybe he left. Misty Wittenberg? And then do I have Mr. Gibbs will be after that? Okay.
So, good evening. I'm Misty Wittenberg, 5th Ward. I wanted to speak to A12, which is the $1.25 million settlement in which the city is not admitting liability in the Crosby case. I want to urge you to insist that we admit liability. We're in this mess because we refused to take blame from the start. Most of the settlement is for reputational harm caused by the city. It was initiated because instead of apologizing to this young man, we pursued charges against him that even officers on the scene had said they knew we're gonna fall apart, and that was at taxpayer expense. His initial suit asked for less than $50,000, and it increased to what it is now because we repeatedly smeared him and we used city platforms to do that. Would we release the dash cam video? We perpetuated charges against him that he'd been acquitted of 10 months before. And I just want to ask, you know, who's advising these decisions that keep adding zeros to settlements? The attorneys who are advising you in this whole neither admit nor deny, they all represent the city corporation and its corporate interests, but you guys are supposed to be representing the public interest. And protecting the city from having to admit when it's wrong to members of the public is not in the public interest. I just wanted to point out to, you know, taxpayers pay the salaries of four staff attorneys and outside counsel, and when public interests and corporate interests conflict, we're funding people working against our interest. So that's a systemic problem. It's not something that can be solved today, but it's something to keep in mind when you guys are asking questions. I know the only advisement you have here is corporation counsel. Just consider her interests, your interests, and when they might conflict. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Albert Gibbs? And then, do we have anyone else? I know you want to speak. Clerk Reed, we have anybody else?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay. Oh, Kenneth Jones. All right, all right. We'll do Kenneth Jones then next, and then Clerk Reed, you can come to the podium for public comment.
My name is Albert Gibbs, born and raised Stevensonian. I won't be before you long, but a gentleman introduced me to the new Robert Crown Center Project tax, as he said about this project, and it's really, it's kind of outrageous, from the one contractor even, getting the bid for the entire job, when this shows that we could have saved money using multiple contractors. Somebody being paid off here, it's madness. And to look at all of this, seems like they have a monopoly on certain things that everyone else in the, in the community doesn't have. Kind of bias, if you will. The purchase of vehicles, 10 police vehicles or 10 vehicles for operation in the police department, fire department facilities. If we were having such a problem with the budget, what are we spending money for like that? You mean, the police are gonna drive vehicles that are gonna break down? The fire department is gonna drive trucks that can't get the job done? This doesn't seem fair. And lastly, I will, I will say this. It is a poor demonstration on the city of Evanston that says they are all-inclusive in everything, when you had to pay a young man $1.25 million for opening the car, the door to his own car. And I looked at that video and I saw officers act like thugs. They acted like gangsters and attacked that black man because someone white called and said, "I think there is a crime going on." And the Evanston police just showed how ruthless they can be. An educated black man, by the way, and that's the attack that he gets. I can speak from person, personal things. This Evanston Police Department is nothing nice. You actually need to do something about having them psychologically tested on a monthly basis. They are thugs. They are ruthless. Oh, don't let me say all of them are. One or two or a few may not be. But if they are supposed to be representative of my city, where it said that we are so diversity-inclusive and all, who's zoning who here? Shame.
Okay. Next speaker is Kenneth Jones. And then after Kenneth. Okay. And then after Kenneth, Clerk Reed at the podium, and then that will conclude public comment.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kenneth Jones. I'm president of St. Francis Hospital here in Evanston. I've served in that role since May of 2017, and I come here to speak on behalf of A13, which is a resolution to have a grant with Amida Health, St. Francis Hospital, and the city of Evanston for a concept called mobile integrated healthcare. And mobile integrated healthcare is a concept where we will be partnering with the city of Evanston to work with our community and to really send out paramedics to work with the most vulnerable in our community with the goal of reducing readmissions and the goal of providing more value-based care in the community, with a focus on pneumonia, congestive heart failure, COPD, and conditions that are of the most highest risk for our community. As you all may know, Evanston, Amida Health, St. Francis Hospital has been in the community since 1901 as a Level 1 trauma center. We provide over 100 residency opportunities in internal medicine and emergency medicine, a general surgery residency program, as well as an OB-GYN residency program. I really want to thank many of you who all have helped put this program in place, starting with Mayor Hagerty, city manager Bobbich, our community leadership board members, two of them who are represented here tonight, Alderman Rainey and Director Thomas Smith, and our fire chief Scott, who, when I started in this role, we sat down and came up with a creative opportunity to partner, and we came up with this model, which has been put in place in other communities such as Rockford, Illinois, as well as Racine, Wisconsin. And our team here at St. Francis, our physicians, our donors, this is all funded through donors who support our hospital and have supported our hospital throughout the years, and really are looking forward to seeing the benefits of this service, as well as our staff, physicians, and of course, our patients, who, who we serve on a daily basis. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I look forward to seeing this program work for, on behalf of the residents here in Evanston, and we'll make sure to report back on its results as they come forward. Thank you.
Great. And thank, thank you for all the ways that you all partner with the city and that you're opening your garage for folks to park. So thank you. Clerk Reed, if you want to come to the, go to the podium, you can make your statement at the podium as part of public comment.
Can you do the, can you do the time?
I must say, Mayor Hagerty, I'm slightly disappointed that I couldn't make the statement from the dais, as I, I don't think I've ever asked to comment on an issue before the council as, you know, from the dais. I'm sorry, that was the alarm from the last...
Your time is up. We'll give you, we'll give you, we'll give you an extra, I'll give you an extra three minutes, all right? I know, I know you're disappointed that you're not up here. I just think it's appropriate because I think the comments being made, you know, in, in, in your roles as citizen and, and the role of a clerk is, is not to speak up here on these policy issues. That's the role of the city council members up here.
I agree. My, my only contention is that I could argue that the reason this video was released was in part because of, you know, of course, Alderman Miller calling for its release, but the discussion that started as a result of, you know, my false arrest, which led to a real discussion here in the city. But I will get to the issue. Tonight, the city council is set to approve a $1.25 million settlement for Lawrence Crosby. And as Ms. Wittenberg mentioned, the bulk of the $1.25 million settlement is compensation for reputational harm caused by us, the city, and our refusal to take responsibility and work towards with justice. Community scrutiny is centered around the actions of the first responders, the police department, and first responders have a tough job, and they thought this was a felony stop. The police department has issued a number of reforms, including body cameras and for all officers, and a cessation of policy forcing suspects into the prone position during felony traffic stops. And we should be proud of these steps, and I expect under the leadership of Chief Cook, our new police chief, that these measures will go further. Recent conversations amongst community members and even mentioned here from the podium have focused on the young lady who reported this... have focused on the young lady who reported this supposed crime. The swift criminalization and suspicion of the black body and of young black men is unfortunately ingrained deeply into the bedrock of our culture. And we must, as individuals and as this institution, check racial bias, afford our neighbors the benefit of the doubt, and be willing to investigate further. What I'm concerned most by, however what I'm concerned most by, is what hasn't garnered attention from the public, and most alarmingly, from some members of this dais. And the city's released dash cam footage. We opened with a furthering of the criminalization of Mr. Crosby, accusing him of actively resisting arrest and failing to comply with officers. And this is over a year after he'd been acquitted of those charges. We have a public interest, and the city has, the public has an interest in the city's acknowledgement of when we do wrong, and it's beyond the financial cost. It's essential for public trust overall, and essential for the safety of our officers, and essential for making sure that this does not occur again. And the city, instead of apologizing to Mr. Crosby after finding out the car was registered to him, he was still arrested. Instead of dropping the charges, our former corporation counsel chose to pursue those charges, knowing that they could be and would be dismissed in court, and prompting this lawsuit. But I do know that this council is committed to making our community, our great community, the most livable city in the world. And I ask that in light of tonight's settlement, the council will review the process sees in reviewing criminal charges within the law department. I ask that we review the use of disobedience to police as a charge. I have noticed through FOIA that the police department has had a steep decrease in the use of that charge. And so I hope we will review these and take serious steps to ensure that this does not happen again in the future. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Clerk Reed?
Lastly, you know, I do want to make sure that, you know, we have a discussion. On the agenda is also executive session minutes, and I hope that we will have a robust discussion regarding the availability of those.
Great. All right. Thank you. All right. That concludes public comment. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking eloquently on a variety of issues that are before the council. We're now going to move on to the consent agenda. We don't have any special items this evening. If I could ask you, Alderman Ru Simmons, if you could take us through M1 and then APW, and then we'll hand it off to Alderman Ravel.
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty. In one, approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting of January 14, 2019, it's for action. A1, payroll, December 24, 2018 through January 6, 2018, $2,993,971, it's for action. A2, bills list, January 29, 2019, $2,159,324.72. Bills list, January 29, 2019, fiscal year 2019, $438,346.36. BMO credit card activity period ending October 26, 2018, without Amazon, $182,884,062, it's for action. A3, BMO credit, Amazon credit card activity-
That, please.
A4, staff recommends city council approval of the purchase of 10 vehicles for operations in the police department, fire department, and facilities management. The following vehicles will be purchased: five 2019 Ford Explorer SUVs, one 2019 Ford Tourist sedan, and one 2019 Ford Transit full-size van from Curry Motor Fleet. In the amount of $213,051. And two 2019 Ford Expedition SUVs and one 2019 Ford Transit Connect cargo van will be purchased from Coons Country Ford in Antioch in the amount of $102,567. Funding for the vehicles will be from the Equipment Replacement Fund in the amount of $315,618, which has a budget amount of $1,622,977. The expenditure represents 19.4% of this budgeted amount, it's for action. A5, staff recommends that city council authorize the city manager to execute an extension of the intergovernmental agreement for 2019 refused disposal fees to Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County in the amount not to exceed $750,000 for operations and maintenance transfer fees. Fundings will be provided by Solid Waste Fund, which has a budget of $750,000 for 2019, it's for action. A6, staff recommends city council approval of the estimated annual user charge for 2019 with Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for disposal of sludge generated as part of the water treatment process in the amount of $154,304.18. Four payments of $38,576.05 will be made beginning in February 2019 and ending November 19. Funding for this work will be from the Water Fund. This account has a budget of $339,000 allocated for MWRD GC sludge disposal fees, it's for action. A7, staff recommends that city council authorize the city manager to execute a renewal of the annual sole source maintenance and support agreement for the term March 1, 2019 through November 30, 2019, with Harris Computer Systems, for Harris North Star Utility Billing Software in the amount of $35,767.39. Funding for this purchase will be from Water Fund, which has an allocation of $45,000 for this item, it's for action. A8, staff recommends city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the water plant evaluation with CDM Smith, Inc., in the amount of $191,653. Funding for the study will be provided from the Water Fund. The account has a budget of $200,000 in fiscal year 2019, all of which is remaining, that is for action. A9-
Could you take that off?
Yes. A10, staff recommends city council adopt Resolution 8R19 authorizing construction of Illinois State Highways for years 2019 and '20. A11, staff recommends city council adopt Resolution 6R19, releasing certain closed session meeting minutes and finding that a need still exists for confidentiality as to other minutes. The city is furthering its efforts to provide access to information and openness in government through the appropriate release of closed session minutes for the city council. A12, staff recommends city council adoption of Resolution 9R18 authorizing the city of Evanston to issue a settlement payment pursuant to a settlement agreement and a release in Lawrence Crosby versus City of Evanston. Funding will be for the insurance fund. This is for action. A13, staff recommends that city council adopt Resolution 2R19 authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with AMITA St. Francis Hospital to receive funding for a mobile integrated healthcare community paramedic programs, for action. A14, staff recommends city council adoption of Resolution 7R19 authorizing payments relating to fiscal year 2019 capital improvement plan project expenditures up to $31,360,000 be reimbursed by the subsequent 2019 general obligation bond issuances, for action. A15, the Transportation Parking Committee recommends city council adopt Ordinance 163 018 amending portions of City Code Section 10117A passenger loading zones to amend the loading zone on Simpson Street, this is for action. A16, staff recommends adoption of Ordinance 162 018 amending portions of Ordinance 726D sidewalk cafes to modify permit fees approval procedures. Staff proposal proposes sidewalk cafe permit applications to require the approval of DAPR Committee with exception of requests for a city council to permit the consumption of sale of alcohol on sidewalk cafe premises. Sidewalk cafe permit fees will increase to align with costs of administering the program and use of surrounding public ways, for action.
Great. Thank you, Alderman Ru Simmons. Alderman Ravel, could you take us through planning and development and also cover the appointment?
Okay.
Thank you.
P1, staff recommends approval of $26,675 for community partners for affordable housing to continue administering Evanston's inclusionary housing ordinance, centralized waitlist, and conduct income certifications and recertification of households for inclusionary units. The Housing and Homelessness Commission reviewed SEPA's proposal at its meeting on December 6, 2018, and concluded that it should receive a favorable funding recommendation. However, due to a lack of quorum, the commission was not able to officially vote on the application. The funding source is the city's Affordable Housing Fund, which has a current uncommitted cash balance of approximately $800,000, including $50,000 budgeted for other program costs in fiscal year 2019. This is for action. Item P2 was held in committee until February 11. Item P3, the Zoning Board of Appeals and city staff recommend adoption of Ordinance 9-0-19 granting special use approval for a ground floor medical office, North Shore University Health System, and major zoning relief for no additional parking spaces, where seven additional parking spaces are required for a medical office in the C1A Commercial Mixed Use District and the Dempster Mile Overlay District. The applicant has complied with all zoning requirements and meets all of the standards for special use and major variations for this district. This is for introduction. Item P4 was held in committee until February 11, and Item P5 was defeated in committee. Item P6, the Plan Commission and staff recommend adopting Ordinance 3-0-19 amending the zoning ordinance, Section 6-15-13-2, procedure for district designation, and 6-15-13-7 permitted uses, and creating a new Section 6-15-13-8 special uses to clarify the permitted and special uses in the redevelopment overlay district, and update the list of underlying zoning districts that may carry the overlay designation. This is for action. And P7, the Zoning Board of Appeals and city staff recommend adoption of Ordinance 7-0-19 granting special use approval for a ground floor medical office, Evanston Family Chiropractic and Wellness Center in the B2 District and Dempster Main Overlay District. The applicant has complied with all zoning requirements and meets all of the standards of a special use for this district. This is for action. And for appointment to the Parks Recreation and Community Services Board, Jesse Greenberg. And that's my report. Move approval.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
City clerk, could you please take the roll?
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Whatever.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wayne.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
All right. The consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on a nine-to-zero vote. Alderman Ru Simmons, there were two items that were taken off, starting with A3.
A3, BMO Amazon credit card activity period ending October 26, 2018, in the amount of For action.
Is your second?
Second.
Okay. City clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman, I'm sorry. Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wayne.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Abstaining.
All right. So Item A3, BMO, that's okay, you should ask him. BMO Amazon credit card activity passes the Evanston City Council on an eight-to-zero vote with Alderman Sufferton abstaining. A9?
A9.
Excuse me, that was a seven, thank you, city manager, that was a seven-to-zero. Just so folks know, Alderman Fleming had an emergency come up and had to leave. A9?
A9, staff recommends city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the Sherman Plaza Garage lighting upgrade with Agni Group, in the amount of $334,618. Funding is available from the Parking Fund, which has a budget of $650,000, all of which is remaining. This is for action.
Is your second?
Second.
Okay. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question about this. So the $334,000, that's more than half of the budget. What else do we have coming forward that is a need that that budget must meet? Do you know, Mr. City Manager?
Less than half.
It's more than half.
Alderman Fisk, members of the council, this was discussed briefly at committee. One of the issues that was raised at committee is that there is a reimbursement from the Sherman Plaza tenants for a portion of this. I do not have that dollar amount here this evening, but there is a portion that's reimbursed. The other major infrastructure project for the garage are new cameras, and I also do not have the dollar amount for that, so.
Would this have been covered under the Washington National TIF?
Erica sent an email.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't see it.
Well, the email was just-
It did not have all the answers to these questions.
Yeah, it didn't have all the answers.
The TIF, of course, is concluded.
No, I know it is, but would it have been covered?
I can't answer that question.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you'd like, this is certainly something we want to move forward with, but if there's additional questions, we can hold it and have it come back on the 11th, otherwise. It's a needed project. The email that Ms. Storley provided this evening talks about the deficit of the lighting because of the, we are no longer able to get bulbs for the fixtures, so there's urgency in that regard.
Yeah, no, I understand the need for it. I'm just trying to figure out what other-
So cameras are the other big expense.
Okay, and we don't know how much that is going to be, and we don't have the number for the contribution from the Sherman Plaza-
That is correct. And we're holding off on the camera project until the lighting is done, because we want to make sure that the cameras work appropriately with the lighting that's installed. So there's a stair step to the projects with the cameras.
Okay.
And I think Alderman Sufferton had another question that wasn't addressed in Erica's response. Was that you, Alderman Sufferton, or someone else? In terms of the residents' contributions or responsibility, was that you or Alderman Rainey?
I appreciate the credit, but no, that's not me. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you'd like, we can provide that for you off agenda, or we can hold it and have the information for each next meeting.
Alderman Rainey?
You know, we talk a lot about how important economic development is to this community and infrastructure. This is one of our major garages, and we've just done Fountain Square, and the garage has to be lighted, and it seems like a huge number of lights are out, and they no longer make the kind of lighting that fits in the bulb, and I don't even know if they're called sockets anymore, but whatever those things are that you put the lights in, they don't even make them anymore. And evidently, the lifespan of the new kind of lighting is extreme, and it seems like we need to move forward. We're going to have all sorts of people down there, and-
Yeah, I mean, my question's, oh, go ahead.
I'm happy to move forward on it. I had some questions, and not being on ANBW, I didn't get them answered, and thought I should ask them, but-
No, we should.
And I park in Sherman Plaza, I mean, when it's snow days, I'm parked in there. I know the condition of the-
Is Erica here? She's still-
She had to leave.
She had to go shovel.
Makes sense. All right.
I mean, I'll support it. My question was just simply based on the dollar amount, and just a couple of comments that I've heard throughout today, I would have loved to have seen the full proposals that we see in the normal bid package. So I think, just moving forward, we can almost predict that we're going to have a very competitive budget season again for many of us, and when we see these things, I would say to our staff that it's important to provide us- I would say to our staff that it's important to provide us enough information. So if it, I can definitely move forward and support it, but I would like to see the complete proposal that the winning company put together.
I'm suspecting maybe we got shortchanged because I have to believe that the residential portion, those people wanted to see everything.
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
We'll provide it, sir.
Thank you. But we're going to take a vote.
Yes.
Okay, so seeing no more comments, City Clerk, could you take the role on A9, contract with the Agni Group for Sherman Plaza Garage lighting upgrade?
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
All right, so A9 passes the Evanston City Council on a seven to one vote with Alderman Sufferton voting no. Okay. Earlier, I called the roll, and I just want to correct something. When we did the consent agenda, I called it at nine to zero. That vote would have been eight to zero since Alderman Fleming wasn't here. Just to correct the record. Okay. All right, that concludes the items that were removed from the agenda. We're going to now do call the wards, starting with you, Alderman Revelle.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Alderman Rainey.
Thank you. There's going to be a neighborhood meeting of several neighborhoods in the eighth ward, Brummel Park Neighborhood, Clyde Callan, and 415 Howard on February 5 at the Peckish Pig at 7:00. We have a variety of things to discuss. Also, I wanted to thank Public Works. They've done a fabulous job during this cold season, and also appreciate all the effort people have made in moving their cars and being thoughtful and helping other people. And want to just mention another thing about cold. A lot of our old buildings, especially the walk-ups, do have plumbing on the outside walls, and it's not only important to, you know, run a trickle on your faucets, but if you just open the cabinetry under the sink, that really helps. It is a foregone conclusion, your pipes are going, they're just going to freeze. I mean, it's just going to happen because it happens with a lot less cold than this, and this is historic. Your pipes are going to freeze, you're going to turn on your faucet, it's not going to work. Even also if you have washing machines against, just run them every now and then, even if you don't have any dirty laundry, which is probably unusual. But it's going to happen. We're going to have pipes bursting out of apartment buildings. I remember back in 85, apartment buildings had ice floes coming down the outside of the buildings. So please, listen to Chief Scott and me and everybody else, and run some water, open your cabinets. It's going to be bad. And thank you to St. Francis Hospital. Since this president, it's always been a good neighbor, but since Kenneth has been here, he has been a very good neighbor, and to be able to park on two floors of an inside garage is just a wonderful thing during this season, so thank you. And thanks to the city for letting us park free.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And following up on what Alderman Rainey said, I want to speak for everyone's dogs that are out walking. Remember that you, as a human, you will get frostbite within five minutes. Your dog's paws on snow, especially if it has salt on it, will freeze immediately, and it's not happy. So please protect your pets, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Alderman Brithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to say something briefly about the Crosby, and this is for residents who have been paying attention to this. We are still in the process of settling a lawsuit. We have not done that yet, and I think that that's important to note, and after the case has been settled, then I will share my comments publicly. The second thing is to Mr. Jones, and I think he already left, and Alderman Rainey already mentioned, I just wanted to acknowledge him as well as the partnership between the City of Evanston and St. Francis under his leadership, so I hope that he hears these compliments later, and thank you very much for all your efforts, as well as Director Vonda Thomas Smith with really cementing the relationship with St. Francis.
That's great. He's not only CEO of St. Francis, he's a resident of Evanston.
That's right.
In the sixth ward, I think, Alderman Sufferton. All right, Alderman Nguyen.
Yes, I want to thank all the hardy third ward residents who came to the town hall meeting last Thursday night, and my next office hours are next Thursday from 7:00 to 10:00 a.m. at Brothers K. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Alderman Wilson.
Okay, a few things tonight. First of all, shout out to the Officer and Gentleman Academy who launched on Saturday. Great event and a really fantastic organization that is an excellent reminder of what this community is about. And along those lines, another shout out to Jim McCollin, the Principal of SHU, who was honored at the McGaw YMCA over the weekend and a friend of mine, but just a remarkable person, and again, a great reminder of the community engagement that we're fortunate to have from so many people. I also want to say, maybe it's more than a couple of words, about the Crosby settlement, but I want to acknowledge that the fact that we're making this settlement, it should be a reminder that there's still a lot of work to be done, and policy changes have been made. Clerk Reed did a nice job of kind of talking through some of that, but the harder part of all of this is to think about what underlies all of the events that transpired, not just that night, but thereafter. And, you know, there's this idea about apologies, not apologies, whatever it is. I am sorry that this happened to Mr. Crosby, but I'm also very sorry that we live in a world where the circumstances and the policies and the decisions that are made lead to these results, and that's a much harder question. I think this has to force us to dig deeper and to acknowledge prejudices that underlie these events. Excuses aren't acceptable, rationalizations aren't acceptable, and I know that I'm never going to know how it feels to walk in the shoes of a black man, and I am never going to know how it feels to be in any of these circumstances. It's also not my place to speak for another person's experience, but I have a job when I'm up here, and we all have a job when I'm up, when we're up here. And it's not just to listen, it's not just to hear, but I feel like part of our job, and I think my colleagues agree, is to do everything that we can to tear down the barriers that have been put up. These barriers have existed for a long time, they've been carefully constructed, but going forward, we're accountable for the future, and we have to look to the future and really, really dig deep and effectuate real change and long-term change. So that's what I have to say about that. In addition, I think all of my colleagues are aware, a few months ago, we received a letter from Audrey Niffenegger, who has been a speaker at some of these hearings or meetings that we've had about the Harley Clark property. I would like to request, make a request, reference that the city manager talked to her. She sent us a letter, she appears to have an idea. I don't know if she has a proposal, but I'm interested in knowing if she has a proposal to put together, so I'd like to ask that the city manager's office meet with her and determine if there is a proposal to be put forth, and if so, if that can be devised and put forth.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ru Simmons.
Thank you. I'd like to invite everyone to our fifth ward meeting. It is on February 13 here at the Civic Center, Room G300 at 7:00 p.m. And I'd also like to wish a happy belated birthday and a congratulations to Mr. Leon Robinson. He celebrated his 90th birthday, and he is a living legend. He's paying very close attention to what we're doing here in Evanston still, and he has just made it into the Golden Club at the Foster Senior Club, so he's a golden guy. So thank you, Mr. Leon Robinson, for all that you've done to inspire and support our community.
And he's my landlord. I promise the check's in the mail, Leon. I'm getting it to you. Alderman Sufferton. All right, we started with Alderman Revelle. Alderman Brithwaite.
A follow-up to Alderman Wilson's referral. Are there, city manager, are there any other offers or folks who've offered to purchase Harley Clark? I think if we're going to look at the one offer to purchase, then we should look at any other offer that's been put on the table.
I don't think there was an offer to purchase, just to clarify. It was just a letter of an idea to how to use the property.
It's out of order.
So it's not really an offer, it's just a letter, but.
So she's not offering to.
I don't know what she's offering. I just want to find out what she wants to do, so. But I'd like the city manager to find out what she wants to do.
Okay, I'll wait until that offer comes in, and then I'll ask the question, but I'm still curious to know if anyone's offered to purchase the building.
Sounds a little out of order, actually.
It's a referral. I mean, he's making referrals, so if.
They're gathering information. I want that to be a part of it.
Everybody out there who has an idea, send us a letter, okay? Quickly. So out of order.
Alderman Fisk.
I want to refer back to what Erica Storey, I think, said at a previous meeting, that there was interest coming in from a lot of different people while we were discussing the Harley Clark issue. I have no idea who all of them are, but I'd like to, I'd like to see the list and figure out where we go from here, whether we decide to go out for another RFP or, I don't know what, but I feel a little bit uncomfortable going to one person, and there might be others. I don't know what the answer is, but that's how I feel.
And I'll just chime in. I think as a group, we need to have a discussion and look at all the different options, you know, and I've started to put this together in my head, and I should put pen to paper so I can help here about how we want to move forward, so. Okay, all right.
Quick point of order, not relating to Harley Clark or anything discussed here. Wednesday, we have a special meeting, and we, is that, I'm sorry, was that canceled already? Okay, I did not hear that message.
I move that we cancel the Wednesday meeting on account of horrifying cold.
Okay.
Point of order, do we have an executive session?
Yes.
We do have a.
Is that next on the agenda?
That's coming up.
Let's put that.
But I do think for the public, it is helpful for them to know, in case people are planning to come out, is there consensus that we're going to postpone this meeting on Wednesday because of the weather?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So everybody out there, we're not having a meeting on Wednesday to talk about the city manager's goals. We will reschedule that.
Good for the.
All right, you can stay in and don't have to come out in the minus 30-degree weather. Alderman Wilson, can you lead us into executive session?
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, collective bargaining, and litigation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. The exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C1, C2, and C11.
Is there a second? City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Revelle. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Brithwaite. Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ru Simmons. Alderman Sufferton.
All right, on an eight to zero vote, we're going to recess into executive session. Thank you, everybody, for coming out, and stay warm.